Office parks with the geese floating in the ponds and, you know, that's, well, that's the old model now. They're going back to the future and they're bringing things together. Walkable, mixed-use, residential in there, green edges. It's being done all over. This is half-finished. They've got key corners done, parking decks rather than giant parking lots. They're creating amenities inside. They're creating green edges. They're using the natural environment with the built environment. So we've got some really good models to work from. And so it's a believable, very doable plan. And the more they're getting into it, the better the buildings and spaces are, and you can establish it because you're starting really with a fresh slate. This is the famous Reston, Virginia, that has a Main Street. And they have things clustered down there that are synergistic with each other. And the hotels, we can make them line the streets. They don't have to have giant parking lots. They can be little inns. They can be corners. They could be special locations that draw people in, but you can walk to other uses. And then the residential being mixed in above the stores. A lot of people are looking for this because they can walk to work. It's more affordable than having to fight the expressways every day to get to work. And these are real projects that have been built. And then the mix of uses, office above, residential above and retail, shops below, walk to different things right in your building. And then this is an example of, one example of townhomes or row homes on that one block. Here's another one here on the corner. Restaurants, cafes, outdoor spaces, places that people want to be and would be a great draw for the community, including all the great spaces that you could create. The economic development checklist, we ended with this last time, but just take a quick look at it again, because this is what I was saying the modern corporate environment has been doing for the last couple of years. There's a lot of competing business parks and office parks, as S.B. Freeman and Company noted in the report, and they have a lot of cool stuff. It's planned. It's not just chopped up. Lot of landscaping, lighting and signage. They share stormwater, the proximity to the major roads, maybe some amenities. There might be a shop. There might be a restaurant, but not often. We want to do a shared stormwater system, but we want to take it the next step, and we want to add, oops, here, the full checklist of what we can really do here. So you're doing all that planned environment, all that great coordinated signage and streetscape, but you're going to be right five minutes from an airport terminal. You're on the expressway. You've got two interchanges. There's 1.5 miles of expressway frontage. We created 11 key corner locations. It's close to your existing train station downtown. It'll be even closer when transit comes in the future. You've got the mix of uses, and it could be a very cutting-edge, sustainable development. And that's the overview. So we're assembled here for you to ask us questions and see where we stand with it.
Okay. Just real quick before I open up to questions, just to, you know, kind of recap, we've talked about this in the past. Two very critical elements of this are the physical plan, but also the ability to think about how to phase it in and implement it. Physical plan, we talked about last time. Obviously, you ran with it. You tweaked it. You made it work better. And you really began to hit on, you know, phasing options and ultimately how to implement it so it becomes more than just lines on a piece of paper and a plan on a shelf like we've had in the past. So, you know, I, for one, think this has a very strong possibility of becoming reality. You know, economy depending is, you know, is the big issue here, but I think, I think we can, I think we can see this stuff. It's not going to be like a lot of other plans the city's done where it sits on a shelf and gets dusty. Okay, I think the first hand I saw up was Alderman Lewitin.
Would you explain why wide sidewalks are important, and can wide sidewalks benefit older areas of the city? Thank you in advance.
Great question. A couple of things. What we're finding is that some communities are allowing buildings like we've done for many years to be built to the property line. And they get a brand-new building, whether it's three stories or 30 stories, and it's good architecture and a good use. And then they look down at the streetscape, and it's a five-foot sidewalk, no trees. The streetlight base takes up half of that. You've got to walk kind of sideways to get down the street. And the building feels intimidating. We're actually in some communities where they've been getting a negative reaction to good development because the sidewalk streetscape is not good. So what we're looking at is a minimum of nine feet to 10 feet to get tree grates in. But ideally, the bigger the building, you want to get even more of a width on the sidewalk. And we get into 13, 14, or 15 feet if we're going to put our planters in. The planters give you a little bit of a buffer and an edge and a softness to the cars going by, and it gives you more proportion to the buildings. So the idea for the Main Street is if you set it up with the guidelines and the form-based code approach where you're really trying to shape the area, you'll get the street wall and the walking area you desire. In older areas of the community, ideally, you're going to try and establish a bigger walk. There's a couple of areas in Chicago, for example, just got redeveloped with some really nice mixed-use denser retail. And the five-foot sidewalk is left that it's at an angle. Two people can't walk together. They're not walking on the street side because they're intimidated by the traffic. There's no trees, so it kind of defeats the purpose of a walking environment. So yes, we should establish that as job one inside the plan. And yes, in certain areas of your downtown and other areas, if you can start to get a better sidewalk width, you should try it for it. Okay?
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Have you had contact with the state on that lively boulevard yet?
We have had-
Straighten that street out.
And they, well, first of all, let me step back, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to come up and answer this too, is that they are, I think, very interested and thankful that you're doing this kind of detail-level planning. Because when they're doing expressways especially, you've got to know what the communities want on either side. And usually, it's just a big color blob on a comprehensive plan. You're actually showing streets and connectors and transit. So A, they like it. They think the lively intersection makes sense. It realigns. It's not just some local stub street. It does much better for the future. As far as if there's going to be any help or extension with that, we haven't heard yet. They're looking at that right now. Do you want to-
Currently, in IDOT's concept-
Okay. Currently, for IDOT's concept, they do show lively connected to the north and
south. They do it in a skewed condition, though. When you, we don't have the IDOT concept up, but on that slide, it showed the connection from the north and south in kind of an angled fashion underneath the expressway. And what the city has proposed now with this plan is to make it more of a, you know, improved condition by just connecting up and going north-south and eliminating that skewed condition. And when we met with the state on this, we talked about it twice, once back in November and then more recently here in the last couple of months. And I think the state has really picked up that the city is serious about their work here. And as John mentioned, right now, they're at the point of looking at this from the 30,000-foot level. And they've got to establish a corridor and approximate access locations. But when they go to their next part of their study, which is known as their Tier Two study, they're going to be coming back to the local communities to ask what is it that they're looking for in terms of access. And as John mentioned, the city is making their jobs a lot easier right now by going to this level of detail and being prepared. So when that time comes, we can present to them what the city is looking for as part of access to the Elgin Air Expressway.
So you don't know where they are in the process on Phase Two, on looking at lively boulevard?
In their Phase One process, which is known as a Tier One study-
Okay.
They're coming up with their ultimate preferred alignment improvement. And they're at the point where that's going to be decided here before the year out or early 2010. What happens next is they go into what's called a Tier Two study, a Phase Two study, where they'll go into greater detail on individual segments and portions of the expressway, access, environmental studies, impacts, and really look at the, you know, more from an engineering perspective. Right now, they're making sure everything works from a high-level view, not going into the details of what the impacts would be, what all the costs would be, what all the access points would be. That's next, which is known as that Tier Two process. As I mentioned, that Tier Two process, they've identified is anywhere from a two- to four-year program on their end. As communities have things more developed, the quicker they can go through that process.
They like the efficiency of the plan. They really do.
I understand.
Having five or six little subjects, our gut feelings, we think they're going to bring straight alignment of lively into their design, but whether they will be able to help us break it down a little further, we're still waiting.
But in the long run, this whole plan could change if they don't go forward with the lively jog. I mean, it could offset the whole plan in there.
Well, not really.
I'm just saying, the plan that you have here, if it fails, that doesn't go that way, with your presentation, we do have a backup plan to modify this plan regardless.
Yeah, and I think-
That's where I'm at.
When we analyzed, and we're going to try and get back to the map, when we analyzed where those connections are, any transportation department doing a design has to make sure local streets are connected so businesses can do what they need to do. And when you look at that one drawing, and thank you, Daniel, for doing, here we go. Oops, just point to it. Go back to this. These are the little stub streets they're connecting to, just to serve today. Oops, thanks. Okay, so these are the stub streets that they're connecting to today. So if there's a business in the audience or a property owner, you're still going to be served if we did nothing. The good news is, is that they're trying to get away from these more inefficient systems to go better, and they're seeing what you want to do. And they really like that idea of bringing all of this stuff up into lively, consolidating this street with this street. And they know that if they put this in, they still can incrementally let us grow over time. So it's not like if we don't get that in, the whole thing's done. In fact, I think they're thinking it as more of a centerpiece now because of the way these ramps are going to work. Is that right?
Okay.
Yeah, and that was a key thing, because we didn't want it to hinge on one thing and then we're stuck.
Alderman Police?
I noticed on this plan, the stormwater or the pond, whatever, you moved it up. Before it was towards the bottom, southeast. Now it's all the way up top.
And because of time, I overshot that thing. Let me give you the big vision on that, and then Brian can support it. What the Alderman's talking about is our initial concept had a detention area down here that was fairly large. And we were being conservative to make sure we get all the stormwater management handled. And that went through here with a little bit of a connection over. Trans Systems, and Brian can explain it, talked to their engineers about where the flow's going, where detention needs to be done. And the good news is they've created more of a linear system for us, which allowed us to bring the business park further down, get more density, and create a more linear system. So do you want to explain a little bit more?
One of the other aspects here, when you're taking a look at drainage as a whole, is you have to look at your outfall locations. And for this entire quadrant, the outfall location is more up here in what would be our Main Street area with Route 83. So the costs associated with putting that kind of detention in this location and then carrying that through to here really kind of made it unnecessary and not very desirable for what we're trying to do here within this setting. And as John mentioned, as luck would have it, by relocating this area a little bit further north and in the middle of this development, it provided us the opportunity then to develop some additional parcels in the area that we were showing before.
What do you want to, yeah?
As far as the efficiency, you know, which I want to kind of highlight, is that the plan that we brought to you a couple of months ago, the B scheme, which was the preferred scheme, we had, we had about a 500,000-square-foot less of industrial business park space. So by doing this, we were able to increase our efficiency and get more development in this area. We have less surface area of the plan being taken up by detention. So it was kind of a win-win situation.
And I'll go to this mic. Trans Systems engineers, again, conceptually looked at this, and by going to a longer linear system and they looked at the topography, we don't necessarily have to have as much big overall land area. And if we tuck and place it in the right locations, we can still have an efficient development site, but we can move the water through the site efficiently. So at least conceptually, the engineers think this makes sense. It's efficient. And we've even talked to IDOT about rethinking their detention, because I think they were having a couple of ponds up along the expressway that we felt was not very efficient for future development. So hopefully, there's really a shared system. And when you read in there or hear the word "shared system," the idea would be that all of the development would work off of this rather than ponds on each site, which is very inefficient and not a good way to go. Okay?
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, then I will make a motion to accept the Thorndale Corridor master plan, that it be accepted as the official development plan for the Thorndale Corridor. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Looks like we're on our way.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. As promised, I will make a motion to recess the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee so we can hear citizen comment. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to ask you to officiate this impromptu session of the citizen comment, since it's not really part of a regular committee meeting, even though you're not part of a regular committee?
I'd assumed we were doing this under Public Works, but I'll defer to Alderman Wesley.
Do I have to call, roll call on Public Works?
Yes.
So we're opening the meeting?
We're opening a Public Works meeting to order. Let the minute-taker reflect the same people who are present. I need a motion to approve the minutes, January 11, 2009.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. We're going to take this item out. Actually, it ain't on agenda for public comments today, but there's been quite a few people that came here tonight. So we choose to let the people speak tonight and then see what their concerns are. First off, Arthur, if you want to come up and speak and explain what your concern is and your address in that.
Arthur Vialga, 190 Forest View, the house with the boat in front of it that floats pretty much every time there's rain. Several questions. Sitting here watching and listening, it was great. I loved the performance. It was a great dog and pony show.
Arthur, could you just hold up a minute? Mr. Leitendorf, Mr. Leitendorf, you're welcome to have that discussion, but could you do it outside?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Vialga.
Anyway, it was great. I loved it. Their ideas are fantastic. The plans are great. The studies are amazing, phenomenal even. Couple of questions. What is your plan for alleviating the flooding on Forest View and in Ward Two? Do you have a plan? Because all I'm hearing, I'm on the school board, well, the city has plans. I'm in the neighborhood, well, the city has plans. Come here, you have great plans. What are your plans for helping those of us that still don't have neighbors since the September flood, that got flooded again in December, that got flooded again this past weekend? What kind of a study are you doing to make sure that this doesn't happen? Why are you sitting there after that meeting that we had here, that Stormwater Management Commission called, and basically called you out and said, "What is the city council doing?" Since September, what have you done for the people that get flooded? Who wants to answer that?
Well, first off, in the budget that we passed, we did earmark money to do a study in that area. And fortunate that contract has not been awarded yet to do that study in that area. You know darn right well, it takes time to get the study done because you've got to go out for RFQs and everything else. Until that comes back, we have done all we possibly can right now until we see the study. We just can't go there and put everything in place until we have a study completed. And we did earmark it, and I believe this council voted to earmark, I forget the dollar amount, a study in several areas in this whole community.
Was that, was that study passed and earmarked before this particular streetscape and whatever they were presenting? Which one came first? Which one was voted on first?
This has been-
All of this, or figuring out how to keep the Ward Two from flooding, which it's been, what, since 87 it flooded? That was a big one? So this, this actually was passed way before 87? Is that what you're telling me? You guys didn't know it's going to flood again in Wooddale?
Again, we waiting for the RFQ, come in and certify before we get qualified bidders for it. We just can't award a contract to engineer for flooding until we get qualifications.
Okay.
And our engineer has been working on this project, okay? And fortunate, our engineer is not here tonight because we, it's a committee meeting, and our engineer is not here tonight. So I can't answer that question truthfully until I see our engineer. Okay, I'm not the engineer.
Well, you guys are councilmen. You're on the committees. You represent us. You work for us. You don't work for yourself. You don't work for anybody else. That money that you get, you're our representatives. So far, John, you're a great guy. Two years ago, you sent out a letter, right? Two or so years ago? You sent out a letter saying, you know, "I'm going to keep in contact with you guys. I know the issues. I know the concerns." Has there ever been a follow-up letter in the last two years from you? I don't think so.
Everybody knows how to get ahold of me.
We've tried. Final question. After September's flood, well, actually, after every time the sewers back up, I think there are serious health issues that we need to deal with. I've got literally fecal matter pouring out onto the street, onto my driveways. You've known that years ago. You knew that. It's been happening quite a long time. We were here in September discussing the same thing. Then in the October and the December meeting, now it's happening again. What are you guys planning on doing to clean the streets after it floods, to rid the street of fecal matter and other contaminants?
John, could you address what we've been doing over there?
After the September flood and the December flood, both Forest View and Edgebrook both were flushed by our utilities department, and we washed the street down. And if we need to do that again in some areas around town after this most recent flooding, we will most definitely do so, and we'll begin doing that tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any plan on sweeping the streets?
John, can I answer that? I don't know if we could-
If you're in reference to Forest View only or all city streets?
Forest View to start with, yeah.
Forest View has speed humps on that street, which we've spoken about before. And that street with our Elgin sweeper cannot be used on that street because of the height clearance of our piece of equipment.
Okay. Just to quickly follow up, not to take up more of your time, because I know your time is valuable to you. When you guys were lining the sewers on Forest View, the company that did come in and did the work managed to have a street sweeper come through once a week. And somehow, their street sweeper was able to handle it, and it really didn't look any different than any other street sweepers. And if it's a matter of appropriating funds, why haven't you appropriated funds yet to buy the equipment that city services need? The guys that work under him really do work. They're out there. They're working. It's up to you people to make sure that they have the appropriate and necessary equipment to do the job. Job's not getting done. Thank you.
Alderman Wesley, John Kramer and I had a very brief discussion about this, and I'd like you as the committee chairman to see if you can get involved and look into the possibility of outsourcing the street sweeping of all our streets with speed humps. You know, and see if, what we can do to do that long before we do our next budget next year, where we might be able to pull that money out.
No problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to address the council?
Steve Critch, 215 Edgebrook Road. I'm on the other side of the creek across from Art. And I agree with everything he says. I mean, since I've been here, this problem has not gone away. It has gotten somewhat better, but I have never had it flood so much since I've been here. He talks about the fecal matter. I got pictures of dates when the sewer blows over on the end of our street, right across from the Rainbow Lionwood Park, which is right across from the daycare. I will admit, they did a ditch thing, which helped now the water flow back into the pipe underneath the road, which helped alleviate some of the water. But the sewage that is still pumping out, if you go down our street now, it stinks to holy heaven. And it never did that before. Okay, granted, the heat and everything else just added to that, but that's besides the fact. Besides the bacteria, besides the mosquitoes, I mean, this is a problem that's still here. When we were flooding this last time, I went by and checked the reservoir to see if water was going in. Well, I didn't see any water going in. So I went back later that evening, or later that afternoon. And I drive a school bus, so I have time so I can go by and check these things out. And I went by later on. I think George Leitendorf told me, says they finally opened up the reservoir. And I forget the times he told me. But I went by there. I said, "Well, when you told me it was open," I went by there, and the water was not going in. So somewhere down the line, somebody, you know, I thought these were to prevent flooding, not after you flood, then you open up these reservoirs. I don't know who's in control, if it's DuPage County, if it's Cook County. I see them working on Irving Park on a bridge. They put these big boxes with all kinds of electronics, and they've got antennas and all this stuff. I'm sure that's not direct traffic. That has to have something to do with the Salt Creek. I don't know. But there's got to be some, some solutions to this problem, guys. I mean, this is not new. This is something that's been ongoing. The sewage problem, it's still going on. This is the last one. And it flows down the street. Where's it go? It just sits there. And I just think it's a very unsafe thing to have. Now, I guarantee you, if any one of you guys, except the mayor, was on my street and your house was there, this problem would be taken care of. Thank you.
I'm probably one of the oldest residents here. I've been living here since 1952. And I've been getting through this stuff since we got hit first in 72, and then all these subsequent floods. And now we get hit again in June. I'd like to know where the hell is the bladder that was supposed to be installed? I even called Roskin's office. I think we should maybe get a democratic representation here, because we're certainly not getting any help from our Republicans. The problem with this, the stench that we have, if the last two years, I can't grow grass in my north part of my house, property, because of the fecal matter that has come down and destroyed my, I try to put grass in your shore, forget it, I can't do it. Did we get any help from the county, from the Ohmher's quarry this last flood? Can anyone answer that? Did the county open the quarry up at all down there?
No, they did not.
And they didn't help us any, because that water level did not go down. I was monitoring the water, and Saturday morning, Friday night, Friday night at 8:45, the high water level was 676.5. It was still at 676. It was at Saturday, that evening, it was down at 677. Water didn't go down. The water just doesn't go down. This is worse than what we had in September. Is, what are you people going to do, the mayor? Who do we go to to get that damn bladder installed? Ken?
The quick answer would be we need the Cook County Board of Commissioners to vote to allow the installation. DuPage County is going to pay for it, but Cook County so far has not given us permission to do that.
Do we have pictures that the bladder has actually been built? Do we know it's been built? Has anyone ever seen it?
My understanding has been designed, it is built, and is in storage, and it's ready to go.
Has anyone seen it?
I haven't personally seen it, no.
Okay. So what are we going to do now? What are we going to do to get that damn bladder in? That would certainly have helped us this last time. Come on, people. What are we going to do?
Mayor, answer it, because you're the one at Roskin's office.
You know, George, Mr. Leitendorf, you know, you and I have discussed this. And Mr. Congressman Roskin asked to take the lead on it, asked the mayors not to get involved, and said that he would handle it.
He hasn't-
Now, subsequent to that-
I want Mr. Roskin to come over and-
Mr. Vialga, you're, I think the chairman will recognize you, but you do need to go to the podium and be, so that people at home can hear you speak. So Congressman Roskin has taken this on as his project. He's asked the mayors not to get involved. Now, subsequent to that, in the last week, Bob Chilisham has gotten involved, and he wrote a letter to the chairman of the board of Cook County and asked them when they are going to move on it. I did not get the chairman's response to Bob Chilisham's letter, but I know now the county is getting involved and trying to push it as well. I've offered to sit down with the former group of all the mayors- I've offered to sit down with the former group of all the mayors to meet with whatever Cook County commissioners we need to. But at present, I've been told not to do that.
Is that from Roskin's office?
That's from Roskin's office.
Well, we're all disgusted with what's going on here. We have a hell of hazard, among other things, that we never had before. So what is the plan, Ken? What is the plan? What are we going to do now?
The plan at the moment, as I understand it, is Bob Schillerstrom is going to have a meeting with the chairman of Cook County Board, and he's going to try to get it on the agenda. But I do not have a date for you.
When do you think this might happen?
I would hope they would do it in 30 days, but we've been talking about this for 25 years, so.
We got more results when our former representative, he got us, he got the quarry, or the reservoir here, in here. Now we got Roskin, and he's not doing a damn thing for us. He's just frustrating the hell out of all of us.
And just for the record on the reservoir, that was purchased by Wooddale, purchased the land for that. And then Wooddale donated the land to DuPage County so the reservoir could be built. Actually, Wooddale made the initial investment on that.
We're all disgusted with what's going on here. So we're going to expect something now for sure in 30 days? Some kind of an answer at least?
I'll personally get back to you in 30 days.
Ken, you don't want me to knock on your door at night anymore?
That's all right. You know where I live. And I'll promise you this, if there is not response from Roskin or Schillerstrom in 30 days, I'll organize all the mayors up and down the creek, and we'll do whatever we can to get it done.
Can't we organize it now and do the same thing? Do two things?
We can. I was specifically asked not to do that by Congressman Roskin.
Well, could you, one more thing. Could you call Roskin's office?
Mr. Leighton Dorff?
I'm sorry. Could you personally call Roskin and ask him if he would do something with this? Tell him that you had an uproar from the citizens at the council meeting this evening? I think we would all appreciate that very much if you make a phone call to his office, please.
Actually, I've got his cell phone number. I'll call him tonight.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley? Could we go a little further on that and send a letter to Roskin, addressed from the city council?
Well, the problem is not Roskin. The problem, again, is Cook County. Cook County needs to give permission for the bladder to be installed.
I understand that, but Mr. Roskin wanted to take the lead on this. And I'm concerned that Mr. Roskin's not moving fast enough. And I would like to put a fire on his feet a little and get that done. And how about, could we send letters to Dick Durbin and, whose other guy?
Senator Burris. We can, but again, all we need is a vote from Cook County Board allowing us to install the bladder.
Well, there has to be some other way of getting it done.
We already have all federal approvals. DuPage County has already volunteered to pay for it. We just need the Cook County Board to give us a permit to do it.
I think it's a concern for not just Wooddale, for Elk Grove too, that this bladder gets installed as quickly as possible, and it's not fair for these residents to live this way.
I did meet with Craig Johnson, Mayor of Elk Grove, last week, and he and I discussed this. And we're both going to do what we can to move it forward.
Okay, I will bring this up back in 30 days. Thank you.
Anyone else care to address the council?
I'd just like to voice my opinion of our household.
If you could start with your name and address.
Sorry?
If you could start with the name and address, please, for the minute.
My friends call me Artie. My name is Art Martinez. I live on Edgebrook, 197. And we've been flooding from two sides. After the creek rises, we get it from the creek, but before that, we get it from the rains and the wash from the rains. I brought a Wooddale Road, and we're west of Wooddale Road, and it's all downhill from Wooddale Road through Oakwood down to our street and even across the street at Forest. We live right here, and I followed a river one evening, running, I could have put a raft in there and rode it. It was current, it was flowing, it was a small river. And I followed it through our yard, through our neighbor's yard, on Oakwood, coming from a huge new development housing with cement driveways, which is another main point I hope I don't forget. And it kept coming from here. And this is directly affecting us personally, which is, but in general, we're all getting this. And two points would be, one, drainage, four, the neighbors.